Good morning. Welcome to this morning's edition of the Richard Urban Show. We bring you news and views from the education principle point of view. We're happy to have on Kara Keys today. She's running for the vacated county commission seat in the Shepherdstown District, right? So yeah, please introduce yourself if you want to tell us about your, you know, family or if you're married and things like that, too. Feel free.
Great. Well, thanks for having me, Mr. Urban. So personally, I'm new to politics, so a lot of people in the political realm or educated voters don't know who I am. So I am a young mom, youngish, I guess, mom of four. I married my high school sweetheart. I definitely come from, if you look at my profile on paper, you would think definitely someone who holds traditional values. I married my high school sweetheart. We got married at 21. At 23, 24, we started having children. And so we have four kids ranging from eight, six, four, and two. So every two years, you're, oh, another kid. And then this time it says, oh, I'll run for public office.
Okay. Go ahead.
Not really, but, uh, but things happen, I guess. Um, so I am a small business owner. I'm a real estate appraiser. I focus on commercial work in three states. I do conservation as well. So I'm, um, you know, able to appraise all types of commercial real estate. So I have a, uh, you know, vast knowledge of zoning ordinance and land use issues, which is a huge part of our, um, our issues in the county right now. But, uh, one of the questions people ask a lot, so I think I'll lead with this is, why, why are you here? And why are you running? Um, and so why I'm here is, to people, um, previous commissioners were removed from office, which, um, which then, um, both the Republican and the Democrats were asked to appoint from their committees, which they had done. And so I was representing the Republican ticket for the Shepherdstown Magisterial District. While I'm, why am I running? I, I am somebody, um, I'm the president of a civic organization. I lead in civility and every aspect of my life. I think our county desperately needs that. Um, doesn't mean you waiver on your values, but with county issues, really name-calling and mudslinging doesn't, doesn't work for me. So, and I, I don't think it's working for, for Jefferson County residents. So, um, I'm, I'm joining this race, uh, leading in civility and common sense, um, leadership needed for our, our community. So that's my, that's my why. So losing my privacy, my family privacy, um, I have a very supportive husband, uh, but that's my why.
Okay. All right. Let's jump into some of the issues. So you mentioned, um, expertise in zoning. I was also listening to your interview yesterday on WRNR. So that was good to get a little more idea of what you're thinking. So what about like solar development? So right now, um, correct me if I get anything wrong. So we have by right solar development in the urban development areas, and it can be a permitted use in other areas. Like I know the Blake Solar Farm was split between both. Uh, so do you think, um, solar development should be, uh, continued by right? Or should we remove that amendment that was put in that allowed that? Go ahead.
Yes. So good question. Um, it depends on the votes we get. What I would like to do, option one, because you know, we need, as we have five commissioners, we need a, a three vote. Um, and one of the things I want to make very transparent, um, so, and, and I think, I hope other candidates will be transparent in this way as well, is the, the five pending projects legally, there is not a lot we can do other than denying them financing, like the pilot agreement that was denied for Wild Hill. If they ask for special exceptions or waivers, we can say no without getting sued. But if we tell them, after they do a site plan approval, if they ask for a development and they're following all applicable zoning ordinance, they know, we will hold the county liable for potentially tens of millions of dollars in lawsuits and damages. And, and we've, from, from my perspective in the zoning, we would lose. Um, and I did talk with, um, you know, our attorney that represents and also just, land use attorneys, that's, it's a wildly, wildly known concept. If you have a planning and zoning ordinance and somebody, it's like if you have a single family lot and you buy that lot hoping to build a home and you have, and that's an approved use. And then you go to put a request in to build a home and they say, oh no, you're following all those zoning ordinance, but we don't want you to anymore.
Yeah. Well, as I understand, I think it's more like the future.
The future, yeah. For the future. Um, and this is where, this is what we can do. And, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that, um, there's a fiscal possibility. So most properties in Jefferson County don't have the physical possibilities when doing solar. You have to have a utility line through it. You have to be close to a substation. If you're in a floodplain, um, the topography has to be a certain way. So there's a lot of requirements that these five projects, um, you know, by and large met. But for future, um, I don't anticipate a lot more coming in, but let's be careful about that. Let's not assume the best, right? So my first option that I would propose is removing it as a permitted use by right. And by doing, by doing that, it will, um, take away that right. So when you have a zoning ordinance in rural that says one of the approved permitted uses is solar farming, which is what it currently stands, that is something that is by right, which is what people talk about a lot in that zoning ordinance. But if we remove it as a by right, then as a permitted use, then that changes things and that gives us the, uh, and that would essentially stop future solar projects from happening. Um, now, if I, and if I don't get the votes, say, um, it's a three, two, and we lose, then we have to, we have to go on. My option two would be, um, peeling back the zoning ordinance, having further requirements, further bigger buffers. We have a 50-foot buffer between properties right now. I, I would, um, ask for larger buffers. Um, we, the topsoil was a huge problem for Blake Solar.
Oh yeah, I saw it running into Shenandoah. I took pictures of it and actually,
Yeah.
complaints were filed several times, but.
Yeah. Yeah. The DEP, I think there's, um, there's been a lot of things that are, um, I mean, Blake, Blake Solar from, from a PR standpoint for solar was a bad one.
Yeah.
But I think it, but I think in a lot of ways it opened everyone's eyes to what this, I think, you know, I don't want to, a lot of the commissioners are property experts, right? So they thought this was a great thing. There are some positive economic benefits for taxes. However, you know, when, when they were being told about, oh, this is what we'd like to do, 500 acres, a lot of, people maybe didn't understand how much that would be.
Yeah, it's huge.
Yeah, and how it would look. And, and I don't want to discredit, you know, people have their strengths and, um, so I think it's really important with my background that, and, and I'm not an unbiased person, you know, I don't profit from development or no development.
Well, let's, let me interject there for a second. So, um, conflicts of interest. So it's pretty well-known that, you know, the council, not council, commission president has, you know, it works in real estate. And although technically he's not doing anything illegal, but you know, when you make money by selling properties, that's a conflict of interest. Do you have any opinion about that?
It does have an appearance, right? Of some, um, yeah, some awkwardness at minimum. Um, I think, I think in the solar case, from what I understand, he's recused himself from all the votes, um, surrounding that. But I think there would be, you know, people even with me, they're saying, oh, you work in real estate. Oh, you're profiting. And, and like, no, I'm an appraiser. I understand real estate without profiting from it. I am, I am, I am hired to be an unbiased third-party impartial person to value of real estate at that time with no strings attached. I don't, you know, benefit from something working or not working. And a lot of real estate agents don't like me because sometimes I'll kill a deal because the, the money doesn't make sense. So, and, 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 you know, Jefferson County is just one of the many areas and states that I work in. Um, so, um, you know, I get asked all the time from, from within the Republican Party, they're saying, pick a lane, you know, you have to be in the, the removed commissioner spots or, you know, on this side. And I'm running a campaign. I am new to politics. I'm on the, I am for Jefferson County, but I'm Kara Keys and I'm my own person. What I can promise for myself, and I'm also not going to trash or bash anybody, um, in my campaign. I haven't done it yet and I won't do it.
All right. No worries. Yeah. I just want, I just wanted to cut you away and then like conflicts of interest. Well, you meant, yeah, I know you're talking about in your other interviews too. Like with the commissioners, like Kraus and Jackson, a lot of people, and I'll say myself, didn't, you know, didn't agree. Yes, you know, people like myself thought if they would ask me, Mary, and then they didn't ask me, by the way. Although Teresa Jackson is a commissioner and lives in my neighborhood. But anyway, the point is, um, yeah, maybe they made tactical mistakes, but what I'm getting at is should they been, should have been prosecuted or removed from office? All the people I talked to in the neighborhood, I live in Shenondale, by the way, they don't, they don't think so. They think that was wrong. Do you have any opinion on it? Now, I'm not talking about whether they didn't show up or not, you know, that's, you know, I mean, of course you can give your opinion on that. But I'm talking about why did the county apparatus, I talked to Matt Harvey myself, I'm not liking his buddy. I said, why are you prosecuting this? You know, just drop it. But no, he went ahead with it. I mean, you know, why did he go ahead with that? Of all the pressing prosecutions, we had to remove our county commissioners, right? Uh, no, I don't think so. Do you have any opinion on that angle of it?
Not really. Um, the beauty in my, in, in me personally is I was literally the most uninvolved person in this, um, prior to maybe, uh, the spring. You know, I joined the planning commission in April. Locally, I'm like, I have this fresh perspective. It's not tainted by anybody. Um, uh, I'm not a lawyer and I didn't really follow the case, um, to be fair. Um, I didn't go to any of the meetings. I didn't, um, post anything on Facebook about it. I, I, it was out of my process, but when they, when they were removed and, and, and seats needed to be filled, this was also happening when, when a lot of issues started popping up in our county and they became solar being one of them, high density, lack of services. And, and lack of civility. I think in that case you had, you have a civil war within the Republican Party and it's, it's, it's heartbreaking to me. You know, without, I'm not going to pick a side, um, because I think, I think what, what, what's happened is a lot of destruction with, within a party that is good and where we've gotten off track. Um, we need to get back on track and, um, stop playing the blame game.
Okay. Yeah. Can we segue something else? So, okay, so this is all tied together. So, um, property tax rates. Now, I know, you know, the county commission, well, it does have to do with property tax because it does sit as a border review. And by the way, recently went to border review, you know, because I'm involved in a dispute about a property I own that, about the rate. So for instance, what I'm wondering is, I found the, uh, how do you say? The method of the border review very perfunctory. It's like, I had a lot, I, I did a lot of research of their properties and kind of things you would know about. You're an appraiser. And I said, this and this and this, this is why it's wrong. And basically border review said, and I admit that was the time when Kraus and Jackson were just pretty well distracted. So, but that doesn't really give an excuse. But they did ask some questions, some commissioners. But anyway, basically border review overall said, okay, Mr. Urban, here's what you're offering, blah, blah, blah. You know, without really considering the facts, you know? So I'm wondering if the commission, and I had, uh, some properties like that, the property itself, a property, so I have hundreds of properties, you know? You know, I basically own my house and one other property, basically. So anyway, the rate, the property value in one year was raised 130%, double and plus. So I'm challenging that. It's still in process. But my point is, um, you know, should the commission or does it have the ability to have more oversight? I think that should be investigated. And it's not just me. All the properties around that area that's in Westridge Hills, if you know where that is. But anyway, they were raised up, anybody who owned a house, their property, land and any other property they owned was raised 130% in one year. Some people might say that's three years, but whatever. It, it seems wrong. I'm wondering if the commission or could have any more oversight over them.
That's a good question. Um, yeah, usually there's, um, laws that stipulate we can't go up a certain percentage each year, but then I guess there's some.
Not in West Virginia.
But there's some loopholes where you can get away with it, I guess. Um, and, um,
We don't have that in West Virginia. I think that would be a good idea, like a certain, a limit. Cause it's, to me, it's ripe for abuse. And even one of the people that says this off told me, well, we can do it.
Well, you know, as a Republican, I hate raising taxes. So, um, and that includes property taxes. I think, um, in Maryland, I think, think I could be wrong. So, I mean, I know I'm on, on, in air and I am quoted, but I, I think there's some max maybe 3% is what sticks in my mind. Um, and it might be within a three-year period, you know, but, but, but I think it's a one-year, um, it can't raise more than 3%. Um, I think there's loopholes with that, especially if you develop the property, then that changes the category.
Yeah. We're talking about like vacant properties. Or just, just, well, here, here we're talking about, for instance, I found that the house values, I think that's a little more stable because, you know, you're in the business, but I think it's the right term. They use the cost method. So you know, what does it take to build this house? So they can't just suddenly say, oh, it took a hundred thousand, now it's three or 500. But with the land, it's much seems to be, you know, they, they just say, oh, well, blah, blah, blah. And literally the value was raised 130% on many properties. And it happened on the property here is in Shenondale, too. They went up the year before. I wish I'd challenged that. I was, I guess, sleeping like a lot of people, but the, the next one caught my attention even more. It went up like, um, I think it went up like 70%, like where my house is sitting, you know? And not just mine, all a bunch of people. So it's, something's going on. It's, to me, it's, uh, it's not transparent. And it's, there's some, uh, you know, problems with that or corruption.
Yeah. I, I think there's something to, um, that there definitely should be a cap on that. Um, I, I think, um, especially with, um, any areas that, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it from the hat of a young mom with kids, with daycare expenses and raising four kids during inflation, right? But also with an aging population, you have people that don't get that 30% increase in social security, but now have that increase there and inflation. Um, how do we help our aging community? How do we help our residents? Um, so a 30% increase.
No, 130.
130%.
Double plus 30%.
Yeah.
Like in other words, a little property, well, here I can tell you, it's a little like, uh, 2.2, less than three tenths of an acre. It was appraised at 8,000 and then it went up to like 18,667.
Oh gosh, yeah. It's, uh, yeah, that's ridiculous. Um, I know mine taxes have raised too. I don't, I haven't looked up the percentage.
Well, it's getting a little up, but, but I know the county commission does have a role in that. And it seems now perfunctory, but maybe they could get a role with some teeth in it, you know?
Right, right.
So, okay, let's move, move along from that though. Um, what about the, so on issue of property tax, I don't know, I've been working on another issue, the excess levy. That's for the schools. It's 40% of our property tax and it's very non-transparent in what the money's spent on. So I've asked for more details and, and I'm still waiting for a new mandatory report that's supposed to list everybody's salaries. But I can tell you that there's 44 central office staff, which is ridiculous for the size of our school board. Anyway, they want it renewed for 25 million. And I say no, because like I asked, I was at the board meeting last time testifying. And I asked, I know this is not, it's related though, because it's about taxes. So I asked, um, for more information and they gave some, but not a lot. But I would say that probably maybe out of the 25 million, maybe they're spending five to seven million on teacher salaries. And a lot of it goes to central office staff and unspecified stuff. But do you have an opinion on excess levy, whether you would vote for that or not?
Uh, to be honest, I actually just got this question this morning, uh, or late last night. I need to do more research. I believe this is a renewal of something there, you know, it's an existing.
Yeah, it's been going a long time. They're getting 23 plus million. And in fact, I did find out from asking, they got almost 6 million above what they, the levy amount. In other words, they got almost 30 million. And I said in my request, what did you spend the money on? And they get, their answer is like, oh, well, it's 80% for salaries and 20% for discretionary. What kind of answer is that? $6 million, you know? But anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's, um, I think I read somewhere it's 20% of their budget. So if, if this levy were to, to be denied, I'm just looking at, at it.
I'll send you more information or you can check the website. But it's a lot, it's a lot of false advertising, in my opinion. I would say, I'm going to dive in. They did give me enough statistics so I could figure out how much is actually spent on teachers. But I'd say it's, it's around only 20% actually goes to teachers. So you're talking about possibly 15 million plus going to the bloated central office and God knows what. So, you know?
Yeah.
But anyway, that's something to be aware of. Um, definitely.
Yeah, it should be, from a, from a, just a human perspective, right? Shouldn't the money be going to our teachers, right?
And shouldn't it be transparent? It's like with your budgeting, you know, if, you know, in your household, well, it's just like, or in your company, if you work for a company, it's like, let's just give me 20 million. Well, what did you spend it on? Oh, well, it's, I spent it on salaries and discretionary spending. Uh, now I want 25 million. I mean, it needs to be clearly broken down and it's not, not transparent.
It's not my, um, it's not my area of expertise. And, you know, I don't want to speak on something that I'm not fully educated in.
All right. Fair enough.
So I don't, but, but, um, you're raising some good points and, um, I'm excited to learn. I definitely need to know, probably in the next few days, um, what I, what I feel about all of that.
Okay. You mentioned on your interview yesterday with WRNR, that resident, new residential properties that are built lose money for the county. And I was wondering if you could dive into that, or not dive in, but just explain why if a house is built and it's bringing in X amount of taxes, why would the county lose money?
Well, those taxes go, don't go to Jefferson County, do they? They go.
No, the property tax I'm talking about.
Oh, okay. Well, property taxes, eventually you'll, you'll, you'll have money in your pocket. But to develop that property and the impact on all the infrastructure EMS, schools, um, you need to have money set aside. And if you don't have enough money set aside, you put that additional burden, burden on the existing residents here. Um, so for example, in Frederick County, Maryland, I think they're a little bit under 20,000 per, um, for, for impact fees. I think Montgomery County is somewhere around 60,000. Um, most, Berkeley County is working on getting some. There's been some legislation change recently where because they, they did not have zoning ordinance, they were able to basically get away with not having an impact fee.
But can I interject something?
Sure, sure.
So we had impact fees. They were high, like $13,000 a property even. I've been out here eight years. Since I've lived in, uh, Jefferson County. So it was, I, when I moved here, I'm quite sure I'm right, because I had friends who wanted to build something. And it's like, what the heck? They had to sell out 13,000 just before they even could, you know, whatever, put a brick in the ground. So then, um, they were removed and down to $1 or nothing, basically. But here's the thing, I was at a, a commission meeting a few months ago that was brought up by Jane Tab, who wanted to reinstate them. Impact fees are supposed to be for the schools, uh, schools, maybe also for, uh, other, other things, but to ameliorate, how do you, ameliorate the fact that there's more people moving into the like schools and stuff. No, that's for the schools specifically, I think. It is. But there's, the school enrollment is level and is it projected to decline? Now there was discussion even, um, where was it? Oh, at the last Board of Education meeting about, about that, because they're saying they want to close North Jefferson. By the way, that's not financial because the schools are washing money. The levy's still going on for two more years than we're paying right now. So the point is, the enrollment is expected to go down, not up. At best, right now, it's level. Why? Partially maybe because of homeschooling and Hope Scholarship. But also even though houses are being built, no one can say definitively that that will bring more students. Do the couples have children? Are they retired couples? And for, as you, you know, um, fertility rates are down. So I think that's kind of an open question. And I guess I'm being long-winded, but impact fees are only supposed to be added when there's, um, an increase in like enrollment. Anyway, go ahead.
Yeah. So that's a good point. And that's, um, one of the things that people are so upset about is how we have low impact fees right now. Um, they're under 2,000. It really depends on where you live and if you have a townhome versus a single-family lot versus living in Charles Town, you know, so there's a different, um, calculator if you go.
But the schools don't need more buildings right now.
Yeah. So let me, if you let me finish.
Go ahead.
Uh, $1 currently, they, they did have a higher amount per development. So it's broken down into categories. And one of them is for the schools. And that's exactly what you're talking about for new builds, new construction. You can do an addition on a school, but you can't do maintenance on an existing school with that money. You can't renovate. Um, so there's a lot of legalities to it. And you're right, it has been a decreasing, um, enrollment, actually. Um, now with all the, the thousands of new homes, um, you know, we need, we do need to have some proper planning, but the reason why they, they lowered it from, uh, one amount. So it was under 2,000 total, but of that under 2,000, only $1 per development went to schools. And the reason why that was done was because years ago, our, our enrollment was going down and we, they actually were not spending, it's my understanding, they were not spending the amount adequately and were going to, um, basically lose that money. And so it was a way to curb that. Um, it wasn't meant to be a political, um, um, attack on the, the school, but because the decreasing enrollment and because there's, you know, when you have a decreasing enrollment and you're not able to grow, you can't, there's a certain amount of time you have to use that.
Yeah. Well, let me, yeah, the impact fee. So is it only supposed, my understanding is it would be for like, um, buildings and stuff like that? Or I guess, or would it be for increased staff? Or how does it work? Can you explain it?
Yes, it could be growth of, um, for example, EMS, um, first responders, um, adding additional vehicles, adding, um, uh, doing an expansion on a building for first responders. Um, if we, and if we need to add in any way due to growth in any way, that's where it could be added.
So do we have impact fees now for the, um, fire and EMS?
We do. Um, and so, but we, but we just had a study completed and I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but it's around. So historically, you're right, it was, uh, just under 15,000, I believe, um, around that, that amount. And then, um, it was raised, lowered to 6,500, give or take. Um, and then a few years ago, it was dropped down to below 2,000. Um, and when it dropped to below 2,000, it really, um, that's when you saw a lot of development kick up because, you know, um, it incentivized growth in our county. Um, but with that growth, we're now seeing some negativities with that because we don't have cities that can keep up with the demand and the growth of our county. So, you know, there's a happy medium and, um, we have to find that. So, so that, that new study that was talked about at the last county commission meeting, um, there's no vote yet, but it's something that was put on the table. We do need to figure out a more adequate. Now with this growth in residential.
Well, let me interject. Our, our, as the discussion goes on, is it being separated for the school and fire and EMS? Because people like me, like the, and let's talk a little more about fire and EMS, because we don't have sufficient service up here in the mountain. But people like me would perhaps support some fees for fire and EMS, which I understand fire though is volunteer now. So that's another question, if that even goes to the volunteer aspect. But, um, what I'm trying to say is it's separated from schools. Cause to me, like the schools are already a washing cash. They just collected 6 million extra last year. They want 25 million, which by the way, I'm urging people to vote against that. You know, they need to be accountable. So they're washing cash money for the schools. So I would not support impact fees for schools. So I would not support impact fees for schools. Plus they just built a school that some people say is not needed in ransom. If you listen to the discussion with like, uh, the last Board of Education meeting, the very last one a couple of weeks ago. So the point being, schools know, maybe fire and EMS, yes. Has there been that separation in the discussion?
Yeah, so I'm just pulling up now. Um, so if you look up, um, there's, uh, different categories that they have broken down. And the first is your type of dwelling, single family. So there's an actual calculator and this can be pulled up on Jefferson County, um, their website. But they have it broken up, um, into separate categories. So first, once you've figured out what type of dwelling you have, where you live, your tax district, the number of units, there's a school impact fee, which is currently a dollar. Law enforcement impact fee, which is currently, um, and this is just the auto-populated, 531. Parks and Rec impact fee is $946. EMS impact fee is 100. Administrative facilities impact fee is 44. So with this, um, I have it, it's, um, it automatically goes to Bolivar Corp., uh, single family and it goes to 1,622. But if you check a different area, it will raise a little bit. So if you're in the Charles Town Tax District, it'll go up to.
Okay, but let me ask this question. Now this is really interesting. See, most people, I never looked on that. I never saw the breakdown and just hear this impact fee. So I know it was 13,000 at one point, or you said even a little more. So was the other 11 or 12,000 for the schools or what? What was the other 12,000 for?
I have no idea what the historical breakdown was, to be honest. Um, I moved here eight years ago. Um, and, um, I, you know, was not, I do not know what the historic breakdown was, but it would be a proportionate share of that 15,000, probably a similar. They used to have substantial impact fees for school. Um, so it would probably have been more in line with the Parks and Rec, um, if I were to guess. And, and just for transparency is, um, every task, uh, tax district you live in, those impact fees I listed off changed slightly. So the one I gave you was, um, assuming you live in the Bolivar Corp. Um, but if you go to Shepherdstown, Harper's Ferry, Harper's Ferry Corp., Charles Town Corp., it'll vary slightly, but that was just an example.
Yeah, well, now you've piqued my interest. I'm gonna, if I can find out. Because the schools thing, like the schools thing, I think why it keeps passing is people don't know. It's kind of like when I mentioned to you, it's like, oh, we want to help teachers. Yeah, I mean, I volunteered at the local elementary school last year. I'm for helping teachers. But like, you know, I'm not for wasting $15 million and taking 40%. Like if you pay, say, 1,500 on your house, 600 of that is the.
School excess levy.
And right now, they, they just managed to somehow blow off six million extra, plus 23 million. We don't really know what it's for. So I'm, I'll put out a report on my website about how much is actually going to teachers. But just glancing at it, it's like 20% maybe. Not, not half, not three quarters.
Yeah, but Triple A Devil's advocate too. This is an existing levy and the last thing I would want to do is hurt teachers in our county. So we got to, I, I.
It's been existing for decades. It doesn't, it doesn't hurt the teachers. It, what it helped them to do, what they need to do, here's, okay, that's, I'll put it out there. If they want, and say, let's hopefully say, you know, the residents defeat this levy, they're just going to come back again in 2026 and try to get it passed. If they want a serious levy, tell us how they spent the money. Right now, there's a report, new report coming out. We're going to see the salary of every person who works for the schools. That'll be really interesting, because they have 44 central office staff per student, like three times more than in Canal County, which has like 47 for, for, um, three times as many students. Go figure. But anyway, um, so they need to tell us. If they want, say, say there's 60 positions or funding like teacher days and they want 7 million, I could get behind that. But if they just have this huge slush fund of 25 to 30 million and 60% goes to central office and God knows what, no.
Yeah, yeah. So the transparency piece.
Yep, exactly. So, well.
It would be nice, right? A little pie chart would be nice, right?
Well, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna make one. I'm telling people, vote no on the levy, definitely. Um, yeah, right. It doesn't expire until 2026 anyway. We're still stuck with it until June 2026. But they're putting it on the ballot now. Um, yeah, so what do you think? You know, we've talked about it and maybe it's one of the things you've talked about. What's the biggest issue in our county, you know, right now? What's the most, most pressing thing in your opinion?
I think, um, kind of like what I said in my interview yesterday, I think, um, a lot of, and this is why I, I stepped up, because I feel like with my background, um, land use issues are the most critical thing. And there's lots to do with land use. There's the solar, how do we stop it? There is high density residential, which to be transparent, 80% or so is within city ordinances, which we as a county commission don't really have oversight of other than impact fees. Um, that's the city ordinance, zoning ordinance that dictates what can be done there. But, um, how do we have better cohesion? And this is what people talk about in so many different ways. You know, they don't want a Dollar General next to their, their farm, which is a conservation property, you know? And there should be a better cohesion between our growth and our conservation, our beautiful backcountry. You know, that's why people move to West Virginia. And I know you don't want to move and lock the gate behind you. Everyone always talks about that. But how do we do that in a way that is respecting our landscapes? Um, so, you know, I think curbing growth along 349 makes some sense. Um, especially when there's adequate infrastructure in place there. Um, and then, but our infrastructure is greatly impacted by all of this development, as you said earlier. EMS, first responders, there's huge, um, huge problems on the mountain. There's huge problems in Middleway. Those are the two areas.
Do we need to like, well, go ahead. I was gonna say, the fire, like, I think we need a firehouse. We have the Keys Gap Firehouse, but it's, it's not so close to Shanondale. And they used to have that substation on Mission Road. It seems to be dormant. But I'm thinking we need a firehouse really in Shanondale. And also we need, this is more a state issue, but the county commission can get behind it. We need an exit from Shanondale. We have like five, 6,000 people with one two-lane road. If that, when that's blocked, there's no fire, no EMS, no nothing.
Yeah, it's actually pretty dangerous on the mountain. You know, the infrastructure in general. Um, my uncle, um, lived on the mountain for a long time and we always talk about, um, the fact that, you know, the roads are not well-maintained. The county residents on the mountain don't feel like they're being heard. Um, there's a lot of infrastructure issues related to the mountain that, that needs help. And, and you guys, and, and, you know, people in the mountain are a significant part of our county. So.
Yeah, I think there's a, down Mission Road, there's got to be over 5,000 people.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so, so EMS, first responders are definitely a big part of that. Um, but.
Can we maintain the volunteer aspect that we have? Or do we need more? I know we moved to more paid system for ambulance. What about fire? Is it, like, right now, I was told, Mike Mood was telling me in an interview that it'd be up to the Blue Ridge Mountain Fire Department, whether or not to build a fire station in Shanondale, or someone could start a new, new fire department. Is that realistic? Should the, well, I'm trying to say, is our volunteer system sustainable? Should the county have more say? And he said they were building a firehouse in Bardane. That won't do as much good here. Who's building it? Is that the county? Is that some volunteer thing or what?
Yeah, um, yeah, with Mike, he, what's interesting about all of us running is we all have different skillsets we're bringing to the table. Um, EMS first responder, that's not my area of expertise. You know, we all can't have, he's not a land use guy. I'm not an EMS girl. But what we can, what we can do is, is, is communicate with one another. And, and I've talked with him a lot. I've talked with some volunteer fire departments, um, some, uh, volunteers that, you know, that regularly help in Shepherdstown, which is the seat I'm representing. Um, to better understand their problems. Right now, we have a Band-Aid over it. We haven't actually solved our problem. We've just, we're giving enough to sustain them, but it's not sustainable. Um, they're, all of the firehouses, the seven, um, the seven locations, they are having to fundraise to have an operational budget. And that's not sustainable. We, they should be focusing on saving lives and getting volunteers. And we should be focusing on the budget, um, and getting adequate, you know, money for them. So we do have to have a more long-term. I know that there's been some, um, some agreement amongst all the fire departments, um, about having, um, this kind of cohesion with one another, all agreed and, and, and would be eligible for some federal granting and state, which is, which is a good direction. Um, so, you know, this is not going to be my area that I'm going to be taking the lead in. Um, Mike has become one of my good friends and, um, I will look forward to him taking the lead on this as a volunteer, a, a volunteer fire chief in Middleway. And he served on the mountain as well. He knows more than anybody and it would be a disservice to, to him to try to, um, pretend like I know more than him, his area of expertise.
Well, it's interesting dynamic that the levy was, you know, they wanted to do some study, they, I guess, the commission, commissioners, before putting a levy for fire. But it's interesting to me is, you know, that the school budget, even the regular school budget is more than the, uh, let me see, I think I have, oh, yeah. Yeah, so on our tax bill, let's see, the county gets about 22.5%, but the schools get 72%. So that's even, the excess levy is more than the regular school levy. And so the, anyway, one point I'm trying to make is the fire levy would be relatively small. It's just like this school thing where they expect to have this huge thing of cash to do whatever they want. That's gotta go. I mean, and to me, it's crazy. It's like, oh, okay, the, the county gets 22%, the schools get 79%. Oh, hey, and we just got six billion extra last year because of the rising property taxes. Oh, what'd you do with it? Oh, well, uh, we don't really have to say. It's crazy. We, I mean, people like me, anyway, we could support some levy maybe for new firehouses. But then we have this 77% going to the bloated school, mostly administration. It doesn't make any sense.
You know what we really need? We need a tax, a commercial tax base to pay for our EMS, so we're not taxing our residents. That's a more sustainable, that's a more sustainable solution. So if we, you know, levies are taxes, right?
Yeah, they are.
And as a Republican, I try to avoid them as much as I can. Um, uh, I understand things happen and sometimes you need to accept the fact that they're there and, but, um, you know, that's imposing a lot on, on our county. Um, we already, things are already hard enough as it is. And, um, as you mentioned, property taxes have, have risen at an alarming rate in a lot of areas in our county and most of our county. So, um, if we could leverage commercial taxes to adequately fund our infrastructure first responders, I would be fully supportive of that. We need to have a balanced budget. And we need to make sure we have that so we're not taxing and doing.
So they're not, so this is not, you mean like the fact that if you have a business, say, in, uh, you, you mentioned in other interview, like the Burr Industrial Park. So you're paying some, is that a property tax in your business? Or is that what other, what taxes would the business have that would, uh, raise the money? I guess what I'm trying to say.
Well, they would bring in a, um, a bunch within, yeah, property taxes are one. Uh, and that would directly go to our, you know, operational budget. Um, but yeah, so they would be, um, working with the state. Um, they would be paying, um, as an employer. It depends on the business. Um, in some cases, there's personal property looped into it as well. Um, but that, the tax base for commercial, um, is one avenue that we do not have enough of in our county. And that's why we have this lopsided system, because we have so much residential, very little commercial. And so you're putting us, an additional strain on the residents and most of these people actually work outside in Virginia and Maryland.
Right, a lot of people commute.
Yeah, so, so if we, if we have, you know, a business that says pulling in, um, hundreds of thousands a year and we have enough of them, that could help underwrite our problems, um, without just a Band-Aid. It's, okay, this is a budgetary thing.
All right, well, we're coming on time. We're getting to the end here. So yeah, anything else you want to share with, with, um, the listeners, how to make their decision?
Yes.
By the way, I noticed you guys both have the more or less the same first name. So this is Kara Key, not the other Carrie.
Yes, yes, I know. I was on the ballot first. I was like, oh gosh, that's so confusing. Um, you know, I am running my campaign on civility, um, and, uh, I won't like name call, but I think, um, this is fair game. Um, I have professional experience that is relevant and desperately needed in our county, along with, um, land use issues. Um, you know, I'm running a campaign that is, um, trying to keep national politics out of it. But I am a Republican with traditional values and I do think, um, there are some obvious differences between my, um, you know, opposition and myself. Um, people we vote for, people, you know, people we support. Um, I, I think it's very different. Um, so I think it just, you know, it's up to the voter. Um, our values are, I think, are a little bit different in that way. Um, and I think I just would do enough for the county, um, to warrant a vote.
All right, well, yeah, well, thank you for joining us today. I really appreciate your time. And we'll put it out on, it'll be available on any podcast platform under The Richard Urban Show and also on our website, visionroot.org. We'll put the video up there. So yeah, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And vote for Kara Keys. You can follow me, Kara Keys for County Commissioner on Facebook. I have a website as well, Instagram, so feel free to follow. Um, I appreciate any support.
Great, okay, thanks again.